Good evening, it is Monday, April twenty eighth to twenty twenty five, seven fifteen P M. This is the Warren Planning Board. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, W C A T on Zoom, Facebook and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. If you want to speak, please go to the podium and tell us your name and who you represent. And we can go to the pledge, everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No A and Rs?
None anticipated, almost anyone in the crowd has one. Looks like we're good.
Alright. So, last meeting, so next agenda item is the decision for special permit number three fifteen, seven twenty seven, Brimfield Road. So last time we had closed the hearing, but had not taken a vote. Ed and I worked on conditions. And the decision in general, and Laura. Does anybody have, does everybody get the chance to read these, have any comments?
You went through, you got all punctuation.
Mm-hmm, oh yeah, that's alright. Yeah.
It's grammatically correct.
Mister Chairman. I know we're, on the additional conditions, we talk about the level, um, noise levels at ground level. And the house operation is from seven to five. Can we say something like, stone crushing from eight to five? So they don't start at seven?
I don't know, we talked about that last time and that was.
But, no, what I'm saying, they can open at seven, but start the machine after eight. For the residents.
We, yeah, we had talked about that, but he, he was pushing back on that, Andrew was. So I don't know.
Cause I'm, I'm afraid, you know, they're gonna be bothered by the noise early in the morning and they're just gonna come back to us and we're gonna have to, who's gonna be the judge on how, how loud is it? Are we gonna hire somebody and the client has to pay for it, or we have to pay for it?
I, when we were discussing that, I thought, he said they just wanted to open at eight and they probably wouldn't get around to doing the crushing till, I mean, open at seven and they probably wouldn't get around to doing the crushing immediately. Would be a little bit later.
Can we have it in writing?
No.
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 Yeah, I thought, I thought he said he would get people there at six to be ready to start working at seven.
Okay, so, in that case.
There's nothing to prevent us from saying, yeah, you open at seven, but rock crushing operations can't begin until eight A M.
Yeah, I get it.
Now, see, the other thing is, we've got a noise limit on there, so it doesn't matter what time of the day it is. If you exceed the noise, you exceeded the.
What happens if they exceed the noise?
Well, and you get the building inspector, you'd have to measure it. The residents could do a preliminary measurement.
Okay.
But we have, that's why we have the number in there. Or is it?
The sixty decibels.
Yeah.
And the hours are from six A M to eight P M that those decibels can't exceed.
Right, which is the standard time by Mass Law.
Yep.
So, I mean, you know, potentially they could work it, not that they're allowed, but they could work at three A M maybe, as long as they didn't exceed those noise levels, but. They need to that.
No.
They can't do that. So, I mean, if, if they open at seven, they, they have to be quiet.
So let's say, a neighbor complains, it's too noisy, whatever time it is. What would be his procedure?
Building inspector.
Go to the building inspector.
Cause they, they, yeah, he's the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
So.
So what, he's gonna go back to this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Read it?
They would, the, the, the neighbor would have to file a written complaint. Which then goes to him, he investigates it and he would come up and say, yes, there's a problem, or no, there isn't a problem, or, yeah, they're not doing this and, yeah.
So what if the building inspector comes in and says, I don't have such a tool?
Well, I mean, it, it's clear what the decibel level has to be, so he's gotta get one. Or he's gotta hire somebody or something.
Now, who's paying for that?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, if you wanna put it in there.
Well, I'm trying to, you know, not just like, then everything happens and then we're, no, it doesn't say over there, I don't have to pay for it.
I don't know what.
What decibels are we at for conversation?
Sixty-five, sixty-seven.
So when we were there, Derek and I measured, um, just to get a, like a sort of baseline. And sixty.
I have the pictures.
Seems pretty good, you have one too.
Also.
I mean, I can't imagine it's gonna cost very much just to get somebody to measure. Again, if, if a resident stood out there, even with, you know, an iPhone.
And do it.
And do it. And take a, take a screenshot, you know, measure, maybe measure a couple times, you know, just to.
And then what happens with those screenshots? I'm just trying to.
You pour that to the building inspector.
That's part of the complaint, it's filed.
We had a, a complaint with a recent applicant that got a special permit. Same thing, neighbor complained, went to the building inspector, and fielded that one, decided to recuse myself. And, um, the building inspector sent a letter, right?
Went, went out, went out and checked things out and sent a letter. And it was, this is, this is a warning, but it happens again, I'll be back. And we'll look at.
Has the building inspector seen this?
No.
No.
Should it be good that he takes a look at it?
Uh, I guess, I mean, we've never, I don't think vetted anything.
We've never run anything by the building inspector, with his own enforcement.
Typically, we issue the conditions and then the building inspector is the enforcement officer of those conditions.
Right.
Yeah.
So what we put in is the agreed, it's a contract. With the town and the applicant, saying, okay, basically under this contract, this is what we agree to and you accepting this contract or agree to that too. Unless they have a, they wanna appeal it, which they have an appeal period, but if they choose not to appeal it, it becomes a contract for them. And that's what they have to abide by.
So for the residents, they put the complaint, building inspector goes there and he has his findings. Whatever number on the decibel limit is.
Yeah.
What happens if it's above this limit?
Well, he can send a letter, send a warning, give them a warning, I don't know what his process is.
Happens again, he could end up telling them to cease operations.
Yeah.
Okay.
It could bounce back to us, it's our special permit.
Right.
So anybody with a special permit, um, if they violated any of the bylaws, you know, they would get warnings and stuff, but we could pull the special permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
It gives them remedies in here too, to, if they do have a, a high level of noise, they can cease operations, remedy it with a, um, say, a, a stockade fence to help dampen or raise the, the berm a little higher.
Yeah.
Maybe put something, some vegetation in there that will help absorb it. There's things that they could do to remedy this situation, so.
So, I put that fence line in to like pre-approve it.
Yeah.
So they don't have to come back, they can just do it.
Right.
If they think it's gonna help, just put it up. And it, and I said, it doesn't, you don't have to go like the whole way, but you have to block the areas where people are. You know?
If necessary.
So define me for me, please, line of sight is measured twenty feet from the main abiding residence.
Right.
What does that mean?
Well, walk twenty feet from the property towards the.
So this is my window, I'm outside my house, and then I walk twenty feet?
Yeah.
And then what happens?
Five feet up.
Five feet up.
My eyes are at five feet.
Yeah.
And the berm should block.
Yeah.
The machine that produces the noise.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the same with the, um.
And.
So what is the, uh, the noise level, twenty feet? Well, we could make that five feet off the ground too, if you wanna make that.
The noise level?
So they're consistent, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, cause that's where your ears are.
Right, cause then that gives, see, that gives the building inspector something to go on, alright, I'm gonna walk pace out.
Twenty feet, five feet.
Go up, hold the meter.
Yeah, because if, if you get too close to the, to the building, this will amplify the noise, and that's not fair for the, for the client.
Right.
And this horizontally goes from where to where?
Horizontally, twenty feet.
Yeah, but that's from the house over there, but, you know, if I move ten feet, my house is, it's that big, so do I walk?
Yeah, I mean, you, yeah, you'd make a tw-.
You'd be twenty feet out from any portion of the house.
Okay.
Twenty feet out, so you come twenty feet out, I mean, twenty feet here is the same.
In the middle of the house, in the middle of the house.
Yeah, so you'd be out twenty feet.
You've come out twenty feet.
For both houses or just one?
Any of them.
Any of them, twenty feet out from.
Do we have three houses?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, three, right?
Three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we have three, two, two are really my concern.
Highly active, yeah.
The only thing I have on here that I have a concern with is, you say entrance to be cleaned and returned to natural native vegetation and maintained as such for the life of the permit. The entrance?
Yeah, along the road.
It just doesn't say that, it says the entrance.
Okay. The, how do you wanna word it?
Because that, that's the driveway.
All property?
The driveway is the entrance, so you're telling them that they need to vegetate their driveway.
Yeah, okay.
And return it.
All property adjacent to the driveway or to the entranceway?
All the property, parallel to the road, on that area.
Yeah.
The, the, the intention is to create a buffer as that, that existed before visually. So when people come, just, just don't come looking, look at it, empty lot with, you know, sand and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but David is like.
And like.
Yeah, when you read it, it looks like you're, you're filling in the entrance.
Yeah, so, yeah, the intent was like, there happened like all of.
So this is the property line, so this is the property line, here's the road. How much deep is gonna be?
Right, yeah, how far do you wanna go back, it, it says, you know, are you gonna maintain a, a hundred foot buffer from the, from the road? Of, of natural vegetation?
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be that, I think it's.
A hundred feet's not that much.
Yeah.
Thirty meters for me.
It, it's really not that much, we need to see a hundred feet.
Okay.
This room is, how long?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight by four.
Thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two feet.
That's thirty-two feet. It's three, three times.
Three times as deep as this.
Okay.
So sixty feet will be this, the length of, the width of this building?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, because, yeah, it's the same, yeah, two classrooms.
So, at least thirty feet?
Yeah, I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't see a hundred, but I.
Is it even a hundred feet from the road?
I think thirty feet is, is, is good.
Thirty feet?
Yeah, cause if you're standing there in front of the property, you have at least thirty feet of vegetation.
Yeah. I think that would be fine, I mean, we're just trying to keep the entrance clean, right?
Yeah.
Right.
There's no one living there, so there's, you know, but I think.
No, but it's the neighbors and when people drive by the property, you don't want it to look like, y- 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 you don't want a trashy trailer sitting there on the front lawn and cars up on cinder blocks in, in front of the place because that's affecting the neighbors.
Right.
You want it to be clean, presentable, um, be business-like, so the neighbors don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, if, if, if I become a, a client and I wanna buy one of those small houses in front of it and, and then I look next, my next door, it looks that ugly?
You're not gonna.
It's not a good sell.
So maybe, you know, no parking of vehicles or, we could add something like that too. So you got thirty feet?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-three feet, yeah.
Yeah, remember the twenty feet on one of those solar arrays was like nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Oh, noise level measured from ground level point twenty feet, yeah, that doesn't make sense, ground level doesn't make sense, five feet from the ground.
You can, you can write at, at eye level.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I'd rather.
What, line of sight?
No, noise level, let's do, let's do five feet though, so it's not subjective to.
Okay.
One person or another's height.
Right, so, yeah, okay, so, yeah, ground level, twenty feet back, five feet.
Yeah, get rid of ground level. So, from a point, twenty feet from the back of any abiding structure, comma, or property line of closer, comma, five feet from the, off the ground, kinda like it's.
Right, it's the same thing as the line of sight, okay.
Yeah.
On the one where it says area one must be closed and reclaimed fourteen months from the date of approval, the date of approval of the special permit.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Just to be specific.
Yeah, as far as I remember, Mister Chairman, I think the boroughs were concerned about the noise and the dust.
Yeah, well, we got something there about dust.
Yeah.
Add, add it up.
Yeah.
Also, I remember they said something about how their houses, if, um, value came down, having this such a thing next door. So that's why it's important that front edge.
Yeah.
And the berm is gonna be very critical for that. Cause like, at least if they wanna, they decided to sell, they can bring a client and, yeah, we're protected, there's a barrier there, you're not looking at it.
Yeah, can't hear it.
Could you define me for me a stockade fence?
Well, typically it's what, seven feet high?
So, there requires a building permit?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think so.
To put it in a, to put it in a.
I thought it was over seventeen.
Anything over sixty, six feet, right?
Six.
Okay.
That's why when you go buy your fence, it has some limit, so you don't have to.
Yeah, can we verify that, cause we can put that in.
I'm, I'm just trying so the client doesn't have to do more work.
Yeah, but they can put in a six foot or a seven foot if they wanna get a building permit for one. I would, I would guess I would leave it, I mean, as long as it blocks the, the line of sight. If it's a four foot fence, if that's all they need, then they can, four foot, right?
Right.
But stockade would, as opposed to chain link, right, stockade's gonna be.
So solid.
Solid, solid.
Solid, because solid material reflects the noise. You know, soft materials transmit the noise like a guitar. The reverberation goes through one side of the other one.
So instead of stockade, you wanna say solid fence? Or is stockade unknown, I mean, if you look up stockade in, at Lowe's or something, it's pretty obvious what it is.
But if you put a plastic, it's not gonna do much, it's gonna be visually, but noise is not gonna.
Yeah, well, I, again, if it doesn't, if it addresses visual but not noise, then they're, they gotta do something else then.
Yeah.
So then, if there's that, though both of those are a problem, then they have to find a material that's gonna do both. The visuals probably easy.
And the client doesn't really need to plant trees, but, you know, let the vegetation grow because that absorbs the noise.
Yeah, that'll help, yeah.
Cause I don't think it's fair for the client to spend a hundred dollars on a tree and just put like fifty trees, hopefully it will grow in the next ten years.
Yeah, it's gonna take a long time to do that, so.
Yeah, there's a stockade, solid privacy fence, which is a distinctive fencing style, marked by its closely spaced, thin vertical pickets, often with sharp pointed top. Why don't, do we need to get that specific?
No.
How about just solid fencing?
That's fine, I, I also think stockade is fine because pretty much everybody knows what a stockade fence is.
Yeah.
It's a description of a type of design of fence.
Yeah, I mean, even if you wanna say solid, um, stockade or solid, maybe.
You just don't want it to be ugly for the neighbors either, because the neighbors are gonna be looking at this fence.
Right.
Right.
And, you know, you could do a solid fence and I'll do a stucco pattern out there. And it just wouldn't look in place.
Or just, when you drive on the mass pipe, look on the sides, when there's a residential, they have.
It wouldn't, wouldn't.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All different ones.
Mm-hmm.
So the client can, can come creative and use something that is not expensive, but it will do the job, either visually or acoustically.
So let's do that, let's just say stockade or solid fence.
Okay.
Or even fencing, solid fencing, whatever. Yeah, cause then they could do something where they lay boards on top of each other or something too, I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, if they take, I can see, if they cut more trees in another section, they can use those trunks to build something.
As long as it's solid, yeah.
It's solid.
Solid fencing.
Coming from the site, so it's, it's a plus.
Okay.
And leave them free to choose if they need to go over the limit to get a building permit?
Yeah.
Or they just need four feet to get that extra height, they don't have to pull a permit, yeah.
Did we settle on wording for entrance? Or?
It would be an area.
Area surrounding the entrance?
Well, I was gonna say it's an area parallel to the road, adjacent on either side of the entryway for depth of thirty feet back.
Okay, yeah, that works, perfect.
Okay. And yeah, the area has to, area one has to be closed and reclaimed fourteen months from the date of the approval of this special permit.
And then we have, no hazardous materials should be transported on the site.
Right.
Yeah, that was.
Any materials collected through demolition are to have been processed according to Mass D E P regulations and policies.
He said that everything goes through D E P.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we have it.
No, no, I, I know, I know what you're saying, yeah.
We just wanna make sure that.
It's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, well intentions, but if you don't lay it out and say, you shall not do this.
Yeah, I, I think so. Yeah.
Right.
It's a gray zone.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he, he could have tying a license to handle hazardous material also, right? There's probably ways to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And then you could bring it in, even if you have all those permits and.
But if we sell them, you can't do it here.
Right, yeah, even if he can do it, he can't do it in Warren.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those materials are forever. You know, that site just becomes.
Hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste site.
Yeah.
Forever.
Yeah.
I mean, asbestos would be the classic example, right?
Yeah, it would be.
You just bury it. And it's inert when you bury it, but there it is.
Yep. Mister Chairman, a question for Ed, sorry, my English is not as good as yours, at the beginning it says all waters prohibited on Sundays or holidays. Should be and.
And holidays.
Yes, I did one.
Glad you caught it.
Is holidays capitalized?
All work, no, it doesn't have to.
I don't know, my interpretation is like, oh, I'll do this Sunday, but no, maybe I'll do the holiday.
All work is prohibited on Sundays and holidays. Actually, those should probably be federal holidays, right, oh, well, no, cause it's.
Cause we might have a state.
The state holidays gotta recognize that, federal government doesn't recognize.
Okay, we'll just leave it holidays, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that coincides with the wording in our regular bylaws too.
Yeah.
Do we need to say anything just in case there's a big rainstorm or wind and, and this fence or the, um, where is it, the, um, I lost it, well, let, let's say the fence falls out, collapses, or something collapses because of a storm or something. I mean.
They'd have to fix that, well, because, unless it.
Because they put it up, but if it gets knocked over by, say, wind, I know where it's going, I would just put in there, if the fences, um.
Fails?
Failed or.
Collapses?
You know, collapsed, like knocked over for any reason, that it shall be repaired within ten business days, or something like that, give them time.
Okay. I mean, if the fence was there to mitigate a visual problem, the problem just came back.
Right, so it has to be fixed.
But, but, that's actually good, you could say within ten days to fix that.
Cause one of the things we made a mistake on is another project is, we required them to put trees in on a site. But, we weren't, we didn't require them to maintain those trees, if they died.
Yeah.
We put the trees in.
Right, they die, not a problem.
I'm not a gardener.
Are, do you know if the client's gonna have any, any signs on the road? Should we look at that, or?
I don't know, I don't know what. There is something there now, it's just a small sign, I believe.
It's a permit idea.
So I think it's fine.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to.
Yeah, typically these sites there, they're not having a lot of visitors.
Right.
The people that are going there are just the ones that are going there.
And they know where it is, so, yeah, it's not like, yeah.
Right, and like the problem with solar is it gets sold and sold and sold and sold. And, and so trying to keep track of who owns it at any given time is difficult.
Um, we wanna make sure that we put in there that this, this special permit's not transferable.
It's right in there.
It's in there.
It's in there, last one.
What about trucks going out and leaving dirt on the road? As they go out and out and then, and then somebody on a motorcycle goes by.
Yeah, we could put something like that in there, I would, do we?
I remember a long time ago speaking that with a highway surveyor, that he, he, he mentioned that, that they have to, it was one of these solar arrays. While they were building it, they had to keep clean the road.
Yeah, they put rocks, like riprap at the, uh, before the road, so the trucks, like all the dirt falls.
Yeah, but they're not gonna have that, so if you have two or three trucks every day, then you're gonna start seeing this, you know.
So, so the problem, the problem is you can't have them cleaning a town road, because if they go out on the road and something happens to them, we told them to go out there, and if they get injured on, on the. We told them to go out there, and if they get injured on on the roadway.
Town's liable.
Yeah, that's that's on us. But they can put a mitigating thing in there where the surface. The driveway, the driveway entering the property.
It could be corrugated so that it would, you know, the mud would come off of the vehicle as they drove over it.
Yeah, like Richard was saying, at at the end of the driver, there's some rocks, so they kind of like clean.
Yeah.
Cause I've seen it in other places, you know.
Yeah, they they had the larger crushed rock. It wasn't the smaller stuff, because the smaller stuff would get stuck in the treads. But the larger stuff allowed it to. Clean the tires. Doing some research.
I was gonna see if there, if this was mentioned at all in the bylaws.
I don't think it is, but.
Probably was back in nineteen, in twenty sixteen when I heard, it wasn't Jeremy, it was the previous guy. Who told one of the clients, you have to keep, you you can't put dirt on the road by your trucks going in and out.
Okay.
That's what I remember. And I and I said in comment, yeah, motorcycles don't like that.
Right.
Well, Jeremy had a problem with it up on Coy Hill Road. Is when they were driving in and out of the site, because he just redid that area.
Right.
And then they started driving in and.
Yeah, they tore up the road.
They tore up the road from the driving in and out that he just fixed.
But was that really during construction?
Yeah. Yeah, like right when they started.
Normal operation.
When they were bringing all their material in.
Right.
So it's not in the bylaw, and frankly, that would be a good thing since we're doing this rewrite is to have it in there. Maybe in general, like any construction site or earth removals. Like the earth removal site, you know, you gotta keep the road clean. So why don't we add that? You know, measures must be taken to ensure that no material ends up on the road, on the public way.
That would be getting ready, yeah. Because then that's putting it on them.
Yeah.
If you're saying, you know, measures must be. How do you word it again?
I was just saying, I I stopped writing, yeah.
So measures must be taken to ensure that no material. Ends up on the public way.
No site material.
Site material, yeah.
End up on the road, yeah.
Yeah, so then they can, they can figure out how they wanna do that. Pave it, ripper out.
Right.
Yeah, we could.
It's up to them.
Yeah.
Just keep it on your site.
Yeah, just keep it on the site.
Yeah, because we can't tell them to clean up the road.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So if it happens, they have to report to the highway, so they go and clean it? What what if somebody's riding a bike over there and it falls?
Well, then they would probably be liable. I mean, we told them not to do that, and if they drive trucks and leave dirt and somebody gets hurt, I can't imagine it's anybody but their fault.
But only the highway can clean it, so they will have to notify the highway. Let's say it happened. It was so muddy and we couldn't get. It happened, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, then it's lawyers.
You could put in there saying that.
If it happens.
Any 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 materials dropped on the road, the highway, you know, it's. It's upon the applicant to notify the high, you know, Warren Highway Department, um, immediately for their removal.
Yeah.
Because then, because the highway has to, then it's up onto the highway to remove it and get it up, but. You know, you don't want them going out there and cleaning it up.
Every day, that would not work.
But that's the thing, you don't want them calling highway every day, oh, we got more stuff.
Yeah, and that that's the thing about it. If they're doing that, then they're not doing the proper mitigation. To prevent it from getting out there in the first place.
Yeah.
So, and at that point, the building inspector can be notified and say, hey, you're failing to keep this, the material on your site.
Yeah.
It's not the town's responsibility to clean up after you. So.
Okay, so what was that gonna be? So if such materials end up on the road, the applicant must contact the Warren Highway Department?
Immediately.
Immediately.
For their removal. Let the highway department decide what they're gonna do.
Okay.
I mean, the applicant. Could rebuild it as long as there was like a police presence or a highway presence to say.
Then you get into saying you have to block the road, you have to have a detail, to do a detail.
It becomes too expensive for the client.
Yeah.
That, well, to do a detail, you have to have so much time to notify the police department. To have somebody come in and do the detail, cause you can't pull a guy off the road and say, yeah, I need you to do a detail for a couple hours so they can clean up the road. When he's supposed to be dealing with crime.
Yeah.
Not not, you know, so you can't just do it immediately. If you notify the highway department. And then it keeps the applicant out of the road, and we're not telling them, we're not giving them permission to go on the road.
Yeah, yeah, back to that, right.
Because again, if something happens and one of them's standing outside and a car comes up and whacks one of them. I was only doing what the town told me to do. You know, then we're responsible.
Here's my hospital bill, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's about it. It's good.
I think it's pretty good, okay.
With those, with those changes, yeah, additions, okay.
Not not to this project, but for the bylaws, where we can stipulate a limit of how close. The ne- the house will be from the entrance of such a site.
Yeah, yeah, we need to figure that out. And what kind of natural buffer we want, like untouched.
But not for this, for.
No, right, right, yeah. We'll worry about that later.
So one thing. They get a lot of diesel vehicles, and you typ- typically warm up your vehicles and let them sit there for a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's gonna be a good thing for the neighbors to have idling equipment on the site.
So the stuff. Um, behind area one should be okay, because it'll be like twenty feet down, but at the entrance, maybe.
Maybe parking will be prohibited at the entrance and no idling vehicles.
Yeah, they have a trailer that unlike the office there, but there really shouldn't be any, all that heavy equipment should be on.
That's gonna be down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Oh, wouldn't that come in?
I just worry about vehicles coming in. Pick up material. That they just sit in the driveway.
It's part of the noise level.
I was thinking that too. I mean, if.
The the noise level covers that.
But if you say specify the vehicles, no idling vehicles. You know, shall be left in the driveway, you know, they have to pull into the site.
Okay.
You know, because I know if I was a neighbor, I wouldn't wanna come home and. See a large eighteen wheeler waiting its turn. Thirty feet from my house.
Right.
You know, the fumes from the vehicle, especially during the summer, you're not gonna want your windows open.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so no idling vehicles where? Adjacent to, uh, on a butter, uh, within so many feet of a butter's property?
See, we we did it with the, um, site up in. Cut the road by me. We made them pull their vehicles in because they were stopping on the road.
Yeah.
And just idling and waiting.
Oh, it was blocking the road.
Blocking the road, but it's also issues for people, but. These people's houses are right there too. You wouldn't want them close to the house. So I would say a- any vehicles entering the site must. Now, how would we word it?
I don't know.
Do we apply the new bylaw, a buffer zone? Distance?
Well, that or or they should. And proceed to that parking area.
Parking, you know, proceed to designated parking.
Yeah, the area one parking.
No vehicle shall be idling in the driveway and they shall proceed to the designated parking.
Yeah.
Cause then that stops them from just sitting right there in the driveway next to somebody's house.
Yeah. And then they're well into the site.
Yeah, yeah, they're in there. Think that's it.
Yeah.
Cover them off. Anything that can come up that we thought of.
What do you think, Drew?
Agreed.
Okay.
Got a lot of evidence now.
Actually, it's not that much.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first house is about hundred and fifty feet towards the driveway.
From the entrance way?
No, going. Inside the property.
Right, into the site, the entrance, I'm calling it the entrance way.
Yeah, that driveway that goes in. So if this is the house, this is the road.
Yeah.
The entrance is over there.
Yeah.
By the time is over here, it's about a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
Which is a lot. It's a good amount.
Yeah. Okay, are we good with that?
I think so.
Yeah.
We're good.
All right. So if there's no further discussion, is there a motion? So this would be a motion to.
Approve.
Prove the.
Special permit as written.
Or, yeah.
As discussed.
As discussed, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve special permit application number three fifteen for seven twenty seven Brimfield Road LLC. Yeah, seven twenty seven Brimfield Road, Warren, Massachusetts. As discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Biddy's aye.
David Dufranay.
Ed Longdigan aye.
Drew King aye.
Rich Ihacker aye. All right. So. We have fourteen days to get this all buttoned up. Then it goes. On that day or before. It goes to the town clerk.
Mm-hmm.
To get stamped. And from that date, there's a twenty day appeal period. Where you can look at it and decide, you know. So you or Andrew could appeal, or the Butters could appeal. I think anybody can.
Anybody could, yeah.
So.
Okay.
And then we would, if there was an appeal, we'd go from there. Otherwise, after the twenty days, it's all set and done. That's pretty much it.
Okay, okay, we can make these changes tomorrow.
Okay.
But I'll do that Laura and get it to you.
Perfect.
Spiffy.
Just, I'd clarify, I just wanted. During your discussion, you said it was non-transferable. Was that after it goes to Andrew?
Well, yeah, because this whole thing is.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that's what it.
Yeah.
It's okay.
I, I mean, I don't know what happens if your sale falls through, because the whole point of this exercise is to go.
Right, yeah, I I don't think we have to worry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Big monkey wrench in the whole thing. Um, and if anybody wants copies of the decision, decision, um, it's probably best. Cause we should sign it just to make it official, right?
And I actually, I have a signature page too, so we can.
Okay, so talk to Laura if you want copies. Give us a couple days, maybe.
Yeah, so we'll incorporate those edits.
Yeah, I'll make those changes tomorrow.
Yeah, so just check with Laura.
Yep.
And you can finalize the whole thing.
Yeah, probably by the, what is, yeah, by the end of the week, probably.
Oh, yeah.
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 All right.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Well, not gonna knock it, just to be safe. Cause I will say that and then I will get.
Yeah.
Raptrakers.
Okay.
All right, okay, thank you everyone. All right, we have April fourteenth, twenty twenty five minutes. Anybody yet? Wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the April fourteenth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
David Biddy's aye.
David Dufranay.
Ed Longdigan aye.
Drew King aye.
Rich Ihacker aye. Bills and payroll, just payroll this time?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve seven hundred dollars and fifteen cents for Laura? Payroll.
I'll make the motion. We approve the payroll for Laura in the amount of seven hundred dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
David Biddy's aye.
David Dufranay.
Ed Longdigan aye.
Drew King aye.
Rich Ihacker aye.
Thank you.
Any new business? Any old business?
Well, just just, how are you doing on the lettuce for solar? Have they, have they come back? It is old business. Come down, all right. It's there.
I am still chasing down that same last handful, um, so once I get my petty cash reimbursement check, I will have the funds to certify. Letter them.
Okay.
I'm making that a verb.
Okay.
I love solar.
Yeah, I know, who knows? The the other piece of old business, you ready, you ready for this now? Okay.
Okay.
Was Derek, you said you wanted to see something from next gen, right? Was it a floor plan?
Yeah, the floor plan.
Which they have never gotten to us, correct?
Correct, they also.
Something with their registry.
Yeah, they picked up the packet to go to the registry of deeds. They have not returned with anything from the registry of deeds, which is typically how it goes.
Should we ask them to come before us?
I would ask them for those two items first.
Yeah, ask them again.
Instead of having to do a mi- meeting, yeah.
And I can check the registry of deeds as well to see if it's gone through electronically and they just didn't check, you know, they just didn't return, you know, it's like a s- the the stamped. Piece of paper or whatever, so.
About the site plan and the floor plan on 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 the meeting, we have to have those on record for that project.
Right.
It has to be with the permit and attached, so anybody in ten years from now can go and see, let's see this. Permit, oh, floor plan and that's how they operate, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will check the registry tomorrow too.
Um, it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it too much, but just an u- update, Ed and I are working on the zoning. Rewrite, and we're working on the EDU's accessory, accessory dwelling units.
And short-term rentals.
And short-term rentals. We talked about that with C M R P C the other day. So they just got us something today.
Right.
Um, to look at, so. Things are moving along.
Mini houses.
Um, anything else? Any other old business? Comments and concerns? Next meeting day? Would be the twelfth, I think.
Yeah, the planned next meeting day is May twelfth, and just for consideration, the second Monday is May twelve. The fourth Monday of May is the twenty sixth, which is actually the Memorial Day holiday closure. So there's no fourth, I mean, there is a fourth Monday, like in the world, but not a fourth business Monday.
Okay.
But we'll, let's see what happens on the twelfth.
Yeah, to kick into June.
We could do the nineteenth, we could do the second, whatever, or the ninth. Um, also throw out that Z P T is looking for an approval on their stuff. But I was informed by legal to make sure everything else is passed. So they got a punch list from building and electrical. So before we sign off, we're gonna make sure that. all the other punch lists are done.
Okay.
So I told Pete, potentially, that we would look at this on the twelfth. So as long as they're done and they've got their punch list done, then we can approve it.
Okay.
Where is this project?
Mr. Chairman?
Coy Hill.
Coy Hill.
That's on your side or this side? Side of West Coe Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this side, the one we, that we were involved in a lawsuit with. Remember with the Richardson's, the.
You went up there with your drone the last time?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the one we did the inspection on two months ago, or whatever it is now.
Did they send you a picture of the sign?
Uh, I have not received anything, did you receive a picture of the sign?
Um, they had just sent a packet at the end of the day, today, I believe they included signage, but I'm not.
Cause they said it was the same as the one in, at the end of the, uh, at, at the gate.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing a picture of the sign, cause I looked at those before, I mean.
There's, there's a little sign with their phone number on it, but it, it's all the way up there, you have to go all the way in the site, on the gie. Where they should have it outward more in the beginning of the site, because if there's a fire or something happens, you have to drive all the way.
On the entrance fence.
Right. But the, the entrance fence is
So far.
Way back into the site.
A quarter mile?
At least.
It was a walk.
Yeah.
They.
Oh, okay.
Addressed install owner contact sign near Coy Hill Road, and it's up on a.
Exactly, okay.
Up on a telephone pole. That's.
Okay, so wait. So you guys got this today, I don't know if you had even a chance to see the email, but, so I think the punch list is on here, the photos are, so take a look at this and make sure everything looks okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the, the client for, um, for the pit that we just voted on, uh, he wanted access to the pictures we took over here the other day, so maybe you can forward that to her, and she can forward that to him?
So the photos we took when?
Oh, inside this.
During the same visit?
For the pit.
Oh, okay, sure.
There's some ground levels and some drawn levels, the, uh, the client was interested in to having a copy of it. So I said that we will provide him access to the pictures.
Okay.
Great, all right.
Did you send that to Laura, too?
I believe so, but.
And do we have his email even? And this is Mr. Cox, as opposed to Andrew.
The guy who's gonna buy the.
Andrew.
Andrew, okay.
Yeah, he was, he, he was interested in, he said, okay, I have a copy, and I said it, it would be a public record, so he could have access to it.
Yeah, you put it in a Dropbox, right?
It's in, it's in our, uh, in our emails, image, uh, Google Pictures.
Yeah.
Okay.
Planning board. Area, so that, that way, you just send him the link, and then he can look at the pictures.
Yeah.
And I don't remember, the guy from ZPT, they also were, uh, interested in having a copy of the pictures.
Okay.
Or the videos, because.
The only, yeah, the only thing that was done there is your drone, right?
Yeah. So there's pictures of the air, of what they have.
Okay.
I mean, it's public, it's public record, and they just probably wanna, you know, have the project from the, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Free drone photography.
Yeah.
Charge.
Did they happen to mention if they fixed that solar panel, that somebody threw a rocket?
Oh. But that's a, we did point that out, so.
We just don't want broken panels sitting out there.
There's not a.
Yeah.
Caddium.
Yeah.
Lead.
Yeah. Depends where you got the panel from.
Yeah.
There is not.
It's nothing healthy, no matter how you look at it.
No.
On cursory review, there's not anything regarding that in the photos. Um, but I might, there's a good little chunk to dig through of just text, so it may be addressed.
I don't think it really matters too much, other than we know that it was a broken panel that somebody threw a rock at.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's on them, they just don't get as much energy.
Right, I mean, they're probably gonna want her.
I mean, it will show up on their, on their software, like one panel is off.
Right, yeah, I think so, right, yeah.
It does, it does on ours.
Hmm.
Panel's not working.
So it's for their convenience.
Yeah. All right, so our next meeting is May twelfth at seven fifteen PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
You're a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Diddy Billy's eye.
David Dufran eye.
Ed Longigan eye.
Drew King eye.
Rich Aihacker eye. We are adjourned.
Awesome.
There you go, everyone.